Well, that is a good question. I call for the regular scheduled meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council on September ninth, two thousand and four. This time I'd like to please ask everybody to stand and observe a moment of prayer. Thank you. This time I'd like to ask, please call Rob.
Number nine?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Joyner?
Here.
TJ Walker?
Here.
Dolphrey?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Javaris Walker?
Yeah.
Great, we have a call from everybody who's present. This time I'd like to recognize Mr. Robbie Davis, Chairman of Nash County Forest Commissioners. Thank you for being here, Chambers. So this time I'd like to, item number four, we did this consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled city council meetings, which was held in June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Recommended action or requests to approve these minutes is their motion. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second? Second by Councilman Javaris Walker. Is there a deeper discussion? Hearing non-hall of favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, minutes are approved. This time, consideration for additions or deletions to the agenda. I do have one addition that's been requested, that's a closed session, personnel matters. Are there any other items that need to be added or deleted from the agenda, or request? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to include closed session at the end of the meeting for personnel matters.
Settle.
Motion made by Councilman Harris. Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. This time I'll turn the meeting over to our city manager, Peter Farnum.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Governor Cooper has ordered the flags at facilities across the state of North Carolina to fly in half staff through the end of the day tomorrow in honor of N.C. House of Representative Kelly Alexander Jr., who passed away on Friday. Prior to representing Mecklenburg County, he was a civil rights leader, president of North Carolina NAACP, and served on the national NAACP board. The only reason I will bring that to your attention is that he was also in my MPA class at UNC Chapel Hill many years ago. Starting today through Friday at six P.M., Halifax Road between Bethlehem Road and Sunset Avenue will be closed, or has been closed, in both directions with detours for maintenance. Motors would need to use Bethlehem Road, Winston Avenue, Sunset Avenue to travel around this closure. I don't know the duration of the closure, but if you're in that, find a way to go through that area, be aware. The Rocky Mountain Fire, Parkland Police Departments will hold a nine eleven ceremony on Wednesday, September the eleventh, at ten o'clock in remembrance of the nearly three thousand people who lost their lives from the attack by Al Qaeda on September eleventh, two thousand and one. The ceremony will be held in the City Hall Courtyard by the Plant Poles. In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, the police department will host the Festival of Culture and Union Saturday, September fourteenth, from one to six, at Sunset Park. This free family event will feature musical guests, food games, resources, and services vendors, and much more. Come on out and attend. The Down East Viking Football Classic featuring the Elizabeth City State University Vikings and the Fairville State Broncos will take place on Saturday, September twenty-first, at two P.M. in the Rocky Mountain Athletic Stadium across the sports complex. For tickets or the reserve or tailgating spot, call the number that should be on that screen there. On Friday, September twentieth, in connection with this, at six thirty P.M., the Parks and Recreation Department and the Rocky Mountain Event Center will host Downtown Date Night, a night in New Orleans featuring the musical performance by Nito and the Brassaholics with a New Orleans-inspired buffet prepared by the guest chef, Malik Williams. The event will be held in the Rocky Mountain Event Center. General admission tickets are forty dollars. So you can go to the website or the event center to find more information about that. That's all I have.
So anybody have any questions or comments for seeing the answer just for? Okay. At this time, we have a number, I'm sorry, I did not see you.
No, I didn't have until I jumped into it, I forgot. This party for activities related to, throughout the city, related to downing cycling classes, is that on our website, or is there? And I'm talking about not just sort of city-sponsored events, but is there any place that there's a community calendar connected to the multiple events that take place all over the city? Do we know?
I have to say, I haven't looked at our website lately, so if I can, I don't know, does somebody?
Sports Complex should host that. They handle all those events. Ninety percent sure it's there, and certainly will keep pushing it through Facebook.
So people have something? Form people about, do they get in touch with Parks and Rec, or you?
They can always call us, and we'll direct them, so they certainly can reach out, communications.
Drop that.
Our communications department, two four, nine seven two, thirteen sixty cents.
Nine seven two thirteen sixty six. Your host and a sponsor. Related to downing cycling classes.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, that said, we have a number of presentations and recognitions tonight, so what I'm gonna do, each one of these is a resolution, so I'm gonna read the resolution, ask for a motion, and a second, and a vote on that resolution. And then I'll ask the team to come forward at that point in time, and we'll get a picture. So first one is resolution recognizing and congratulating the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments ten U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC ten U Basketball State Championship. And whereas the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, NCRPA, statewide athletics committee, SWAC, two thousand and twenty-four ten U State Boys Basketball Tournament was hosted by Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation at the Rocky Mountain High School Gym on March fifteenth through the seventeenth in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and brought teams in from across the state. And whereas, All-Star Team players were nominated by their coach and placed on a ballot to be selected. These players are intended to be the best representatives of the league, not only in competition, but also in character. And whereas, on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Rocky Mountain Parks and Rec Departments ten U All-Star Boys Basketball Team rallied to win the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC State Basketball Tournament for their age bracket. And whereas this win provided the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments ten U All-Star Boys Basketball Team to be the best of the best in their age group, winning games over Henderson Vance in Onslow County at the state tournament. And whereas, this championship win marks the second straight season a Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation All-Star Basketball Team has won the NCRPA SWAC sponsored state basketball tournament. And whereas, while there were outstanding individual players in the tournament, winning the championship was a total team effort. Following team effort from the following team members. Robert Arnold Jr., Keenston Beal, Jamal Body Jr., Josiah Burgess, Kyrie Bobbs, Tristan Harvey, Kayden Howard, Christian Jones, Jaden Moore, Josiah Reynolds, and Kyrie Saunders, and Malik Stevens. Whereas also contributed to team success were their coaches, Laquisha Parker and William Edmund, and the team parents who provided unwavering support. Now therefore, being resolved, the mayor, may I say me, and the Rocky Mountain City Council hereby congratulate the Rocky Mountain Parks and Rec Departments ten U All-Star Boys Basketball Team on this great accomplishment in honor of the winning of the two thousand and twenty-four ten U NCRPA SWAC Boys Basketball Championship. And being further resolved, that the mayor and city council individually and collectively thank the members of the team, the coaches, staff, and support personnel for their honor. The championship is brought to the team and to the city of Rocky Mountain. And being further resolved, that this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be presented to each team member, and the coaches who were instrumental in winning this phenomenal championship. I look for a motion. A motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Knight, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. It's now going to be.
One more? Three, two, and? One more? Three, two.
Thank you.
So this resolution recognizing and congratulating the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Girls Basketball Team for winning the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC twelve U Basketball State Championship. So whereas the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association is the NCRPA, and the statewide athletics committee, SWAC, two thousand and twenty-four twelve U State Girls Basketball Tournament was hosted by Pinehurst Parks and Recreation at Cannon Park Community Center on March sixteenth through the seventeenth in Pinehurst, North Carolina, and brought teams in from across the state. And whereas All-Star Team players are nominated by their coach and placed on a ballot to be selected by league coaches. These players are intended to be the best representatives of the league, not only in competition, but also in character. Whereas on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Girls Basketball Team rallied to win the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC State Basketball Tournament for their age bracket. Whereas this win proved to be the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Department's twelve U All-Star Basketball Team to be the best of the best in their age group, winning games over DuQuan County, Windell, and Carteret County at the state tournament. And whereas, this championship win marks the first NCRPA SWAC State Basketball Championship for the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation All-Star Girls Basketball Team. And whereas, while there were outstanding individual players in the tournament, winning the championship was a total team effort from the following team members. Benara Bukat, Rhodes Arnold, Amila Edgerton, Straya Ganapathy, y'all are really gonna make a part of this. Alaya Harvey, Kendall Harvey, Mariah Harvey, Evan Hendricks, Hannah who knows, Karen Hance, Chloe Murphy, Rain Pitt, and Kylie Pittman. Whereas also contributed to the team's success were their coaches, Cory Hendricks, Monty Edgerton, Kendall Harvey, and the team parents who provided unwavering support. Now therefore, being resolved, the mayor and the Rocky Mountain City Council hereby congratulate the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Girls Basketball Team on this great accomplishment in honor of winning the two thousand and twenty-four twelve U NCRPA SWAC Girls Basketball Championship. And being further resolved, that the mayor and city council individually and collectively thank the members of the team, the coaches, staff, and support personnel for the honor of the championship as brought to the team and to the city of Rocky Mountain. And being further resolved, that this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be presented to each team member and the coaches who were instrumental in winning this phenomenal championship. I'm looking for a motion to adopt this resolution. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Dolphrey. Need deeper discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now adopted.
One more? Three, two. One more? Three, two, and? Anybody else?
On to the death, Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Department was so busy in the month of March, and it's been a year celebrated. Having yet another resolution recognizing and congratulating the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC twelve U Basketball State Championship. And whereas the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, NCRPA, and statewide athletic committee, SWAC, two thousand and twenty-four twelve U State Boys Basketball Tournament was hosted by the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation at the Rocky Mountain High School Gym on March fifteenth through the seventeenth in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and brought teams in from across the state. Whereas All-Star Team players were nominated by their coach and placed on a ballot to be selected by league coaches, these players are intended to be the best representatives of the league, not only in competition, but also in character. And whereas on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Boys Basketball Team rallied to win the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC State Basketball Tournament for their age bracket. And whereas this win proved to be the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Basketball Team to be the best of the best in their age group, winning games over Henderson Vance, Hamlet, and Southwest DuQuan at the state tournaments. Whereas this championship win marks the second straight season a Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation All-Star Basketball Team has won an NCRPA SWAC sponsored state basketball tournament. And whereas while outstanding individual players were in the tournament, winning the championship was a total team effort from the following team members. Thomas Arrington, Kayden Bryant, Noah Bryant, Kendall Hopkins, Zion Howard, Kason McGee, Cameron Perry, Bruce Josiah, Garrett Smith, Khalid Walker, Darius Williams Jr., and Josh Williams. And whereas also contributed to team success were their coaches. John Smith, Justin Howard, Brian McGee, and team parents who provided unwavering support. Now therefore, being resolved, the mayor and the Rocky Mountain City Council hereby congratulate the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments twelve U All-Star Boys Basketball Team on this great accomplishment in honor of winning the two thousand and twenty-four twelve U NCRPA SWAC Boys Basketball Championship. And being further resolved, that the mayor and city council individually and collectively thank the members of the team, the coaches, staff, and support personnel for the honor of the championship is brought to the team and to the city of Rocky Mountain. And being further resolved, that this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be presented to each team member and coaches who were instrumental in winning this phenomenal championship. I now look for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Settle.
Motion made by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Joyner, is there deeper discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, this resolution has been adopted this ninth day of September.
We've got two shots, three, two, and one more? One more? Three, two, and?
Thank you.
And finally, finally, resolution recognizing and congratulating the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments fourteen U All-Star Basketball Team for winning the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC fourteen U Basketball State Championship. Now whereas the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, the NCRPA, and statewide athletic committee, SWAC, two thousand and twenty-four fourteen U State Basketball Tournament was hosted by the Nash County Recreation and Senior Services at Nash Central Middle School on March fourteenth through the seventeenth in Nashville, North Carolina, and brought teams in from across the state. And whereas All-Star Team players were nominated by their coach and placed on a ballot to be selected by the league coaches, these players are intended to be the best representatives of the league, not only in competition, but also in character. And whereas on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments fourteen U All-Star Basketball Team rallied to win the two thousand and twenty-four NCRPA SWAC State Basketball Tournament for their age bracket. And whereas this win proved the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments fourteen U All-Star Basketball Team to be the best of the best in their age group, winning games over Tarboro, Onslow County, Carteret, and Nash County at the state tournament. And whereas this championship win marks the second straight season a Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation All-Star Basketball Team has won an NCRPA SWAC sponsored state basketball championship. And whereas, while there were outstanding individual players in the tournament, winning the championship was a total team effort from the following team members. Sakaya Allen, Otavius Anderson, Jameer Bullock, Rashid Farmer, Elijah Gamble, Pierre Hewan, Quante James, Jermaine Lynch, Brylin Moses, Lucas Thomas, and Shania Wilson. And whereas the team, contributed to the team's success were their coaches. Norman Hewan, Jessica Crawford, Derek Coleman, and the team parents who provided unwavering support. Now therefore, being resolved, the mayor and the Rocky Mountain City Council hereby congratulate the Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation Departments fourteen U All-Star Basketball Team in this great accomplishment in honor of winning the two thousand and twenty-four fourteen U NCRPA SWAC Basketball Championship. And being further resolved, the mayor and city council individually and collectively thank the members of the team, the coaches, staff, and support personnel for the honor of the championship is brought to the team and the city of Rocky Mountain. And being further resolved, that this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be presented to each team member and the coaches who were instrumental in winning this phenomenal championship. I look for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this motion has been adopted the ninth day of September. All right, this motion has been adopted the ninth day of September.
Two shots, three, two, and one more. Three, two, and. Thank you.
That brings us side on number eight on our agenda, which are petitions to be received from the public. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and values all of citizens' input. This is an opportunity to express views and concern about the city of Rocky Mountain to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments and may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored where to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that signing sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an organized group is pressed to speak of a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are regarded as an item that is subject to a public hearing, please let the lead item that is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are regarded as an impediment to a hearing, additional time may be granted. The city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a signing sheet, address comments of the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and do be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. This time I'd like to invite Butch Dancy to the podium.
Good evening, and also good night. Been with you the council since four P M, but it's been well worth it. The information in the committee of the whole meeting was overwhelming. It is a shame that Keith Rogers has put the city council in just state of mess. It appeared during the committee of the whole meeting that one councilman was trying to throw Ken Hunter under the bus. I am so glad the majority of the council came to the conclusion that it was time for Keith Rogers to be gone. Because if he had stayed any longer, ain't no telling where the city would end up. Now it is time for this council to settle aside egos and move the city forward. Thank you in advance for what you are about to do. What happened to transparency, our way?
I'd like to invite Doria Austin to the podium. Doria Austin?
Yeah, that's you. What's so special about today? I'm glad to be here, but talk to me. What is it?
Ms. Austin, I think. I think we received a request for you to address us tonight. Did you have an issue you wanted to discuss?
Do I have one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it must have been. Did it take place not here, somewhere Sunday?
Did you sign up to speak tonight?
Did I?
Yeah, I don't know, but somebody did. I thank you for your confidence.
It must have been a error. I've been up before here, Rocky Mountain, not a little place. Sometimes some good things.
I'd like to invite Dr. Q to the podium.
Good evening. The sudden disappearance of our recently hired city manager has raised a lot of questions and speculations. Citizens were told that Mr. Rogers had taken a leave of absence. What does that even really mean? Was he fired? Did he resign, or what? He was the shortest-term city manager I've ever known. Shorter than his trust. He was here, now he's gone. Poof. And no explanation was given to the good citizens of Rocky Mountain who paid his salary without tax dollars. Why is everything so hush-hush? Don't we as tax-paying citizens deserve to know? Council members are always talking about transparency. Where is this transparency now? The high turnover of our city managers is very destabilizing for our city. Business is difficult to conduct, development is delayed, projects get shelved, disputes left hanging and unresolved. As each new manager has to familiarize himself or herself with the city. Can you imagine a new city manager having the attitude that this was before my time, or I'm not directly involved? Eventually washing the hands of every unfinished business. In the final analysis, there is something very wrong with the way a potential city manager is better in this city. It should not be made by a simple majority. The review should be rigorous, community representatives should be part of the process, and approval should be unanimous. I'm here, one voice among many who really want a clear and official explanation from council as to what happened to Mr. Keith Rogers. And why he's no longer holding the position of the city manager. We deserve this much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Q. I'd like to invite Richard Pepway to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Richard Pepway, and to the city. To the, I consider manager, to the city council, and to the people. We are at awe over the raises that have been given out to poor people, a million dollars that was in the budget. But yet still, the city workers regain no money. We are at awe at the fact that the city manager who said that he wanted to, they said they want transparent, but yet still they fired Arnie Jones. For doing nothing, practically nothing, but yet still there's another man that hit too far a call. And nothing has been said, nothing has been put in the paper, nothing has been revealed about this case. But yet still, Arnie Jones got fired. We are at awe because this is, it is our responsibility as a citizen to find out what's going on. Now there are five people getting this kind of money, but the city, city workers who are only making forty thousand to fifty thousand, can't even make sixty thousand, sixty thousand a year. But you got four people that are making over a hundred and fifty thousand, along with the city manager who making two hundred thousand. Where is the money going? We, another matter come behind is that we have no, uh, transparent over the who. I know for instance, city workers have told me that they had been scrutinized because they spoke out at the city council meeting about wages. It is, it is foregone that the city manager will let this happen. You got H R department and the R department, human relations department, yet still nobody investigate what's going on. It is time for someone to act, and I can thank you, Simon, it's now. We have streets that got trees on the sidewalk. Limb, you can't even see over the, over the street because the limb is out past the street. And cars coming up, you can't see it. You got a eze out there in the road. Yet it still is not being cut. We got houses that burned down, burned up. It is a hazard to the city and people that going in. They haven't been addressed it. But yet instead, you can find Arnie Jones and the city manager ain't even doing his job.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Lieutenant Shaheed to the podium.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Council members, ladies and gentlemen. My philosophy has always been that the ex-city manager was hired to focus on a specific agenda. He was carefully selected and supported by his allies on the council for a purpose. The terrain was perfect as he operated in a milieu of consensus and dissenters, the latter consistently silenced and ignored when pertinent budget questions were raised. A formula guaranteed to produce the desired results. Knowing that financial irregularities arouse deep public ire and condemnation, he was given the budget as his weapon to wield as he pleased. He busted it with overinflated salaries for favored groups. He and four of his assistant city managers alone cost the city close to a million dollars. Your taxes, your taxes. Other bloated salaries are online for you to view. Alongside this astronomical salaries unheard of in city hall Rocky Mountain ever, he gave the sanitation workers peanuts, creating division and deep dissatisfaction in the city. He ne, and also he nurtured a culture of fear and retaliation to muscle voices demanding fair wages. Additionally, he abused his power and broke every tenet of transparency by refusing to release documents requested by his colleagues for as long as he was Imperial Lord of the council. He demonstrated lack of participation and rapport with public during council meetings. He was more engaged with his phone. The above observed, aberrant behavior could not have been the sole grounds for his sudden dismissal. I question if more is under the rug. His dismissal not unexpected unnerved the city's spawning unfair, menacing, and divisive speculation, which could have been quickly quelled by a statement from the city. In the meantime, a slew of allegations appeared on social media outlining his widespread financial shenanigans with support from his cabal. The public is demanding an explanation for his termination. Why has the mayor, whose motto is "One Rocky Mountain," not spoken to this serious matter to this day? It is time to come forward and address the concerns of citizens to whom he is accountable and snap out tension in the city once and for all. This is the time to be transparent and assure the public that you and the city council are still relevant and have the qualities and abilities to pick a decent candidate as our next city manager. A leader deeply anchored in the, in the community with a forward focus, not an agent of chaos, here today and gone tomorrow. It is time to earnestly focus on solutions for issues confronting a city in crisis. Speak. The public is ready to listen. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Mr. Chairman Bron Day to the podium.
Good evening, this is Mayor, members of the city council, clerk, and attorney, and of course, Mr. Varney. Glad to see you back in the saddle there, sir. I come here tonight, if I may, Mayor, as an employee of warranty contractor, Rocky Davis. Uh, what I'd like to speak to you about is our Development Services Department located on the first floor of City Hall. What we call in the construction world, a one-stop place to do all your business. I want to thank the board and the staff for putting that together. It's been a while since our company worked in the city limits of Rocky Mountain. No particular reason, it's probably been three years. We find ourselves this year doing four major projects inside the city limits, and it's been our first experience with dealing with the Development Services Department that had been formed downstairs. We're currently doing a major addition out of Carolina Eagle, Budweiser distributorship Steel Technology, who is a steel fabricator out in, uh, Northside Business Park. Stocking Glove and Safety, which is located on Dozier Road, a thirty thousand square foot addition. And of course, some of you know about the title, Data System LLC that we have built out at Mercury's Park. But in dealing with those projects, uh, I who deals mostly with commercial construction, was simply amazed at how much things have improved. You've got a system down there now that works. You've got people working down there that are very pleasant to deal with. It hasn't always been that way, and I do know y'all have heard complaints from time to time. But Justin Floyd and Alan Peacock, uh, who is who we deal with mostly are just a great asset to the city of Rocky Mountain, just has been here a long time, of course, but kind of in a different role. And I can't help but see how pleasant the three ladies that sit up front are. They're just a joy to go see. And all the inspectors are very knowledgeable. They're very courteous and they do what I wish all inspectors would do, which is to help a contractor get from point A to point, whatever point he's going to, and not be there to try to stop him from getting there. And I find that to be going on there. But I'll be very brief and just say thank you. It's a job that has been greatly done and, uh, I won't speak for any other contractors, but I hear quite a few compliments from time to time, and certainly on behalf of mine, for the warranty contractors, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and those high praise, we will accept those any day of the week. I'd like to invite Theresa Austin Stokes to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. That would be brief. Um, I just wanted to take time to express my gratitude to our interim city manager, Peter Varney, for your prompt and transparent response to a recent concern. Your swift action and transparency are greatly appreciated. And that you and our city council work together to advance the progress of our city. Also, we'd like to thank the city for hosting the end of summer celebration that took place at Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Park. Um, it was a great way to end the summer, and now we're looking forward to the Down East Viking Football Classic. We hope that you continue to put these programs, keep these programs in our community. They're very valuable and much needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Bronson Williams to the podium.
I'll say good evening to you. So the bandwagon effect is a psychological phenomenon in which people do something primarily because other people are doing it regardless of, regardless of their own beliefs, which are nowhere as often as they were written. And I'm going to try to refer it to as a hardened mentality. So the question I have for the city council today, in fact, I emailed, uh, some months, some weeks ago after receiving an email about the leave of city manager Keith Rogers. The General Statute 168 dash 149, acting city manager, the General Statute 148 dash 150, uh, dealing with the area city manager gives, of course, the authority to the city council to do such, such actions. However, General Statute 143 talks about open laws, open meetings, access to public participation because that's important. It's very much important. You have hired for years Potter and Spur who is the law firm for this office, and I would hope they're advising the council as such and giving current information that the city council is heated to, because anything committed to hold this evening, or this afternoon, rather, I heard many conversations about employees following policies and following this and following that. And so I asked, is this council doing the same thing? Are you following the very general statutes that you're obligated to do? Are you really taking hearts, the oath of office, in which you took when you stood right here some years ago for some, and, and most of years ago for others? This is a real question. Actions of the city council cannot be taken in closed session. In fact, actions of the city council must be taken in open session. So today, I have a question as to how is Mr. Varney sitting here as area city manager? That was an action to appoint a city manager, an area city manager, in that capacity must be done in open session. Now, if Mr. Rogers is taking a leave, I saw the closed session statute of 143 talks about how actions such as that eventually leaving can be done in closed session. You can do consensus votes and see how y'all feeling, and look at the measure, the temperature of the room. But the reality is, I go back to months ago when there was. But the reality is, I go back to months ago, when there was or wasn't, whatever, a committee that was dealing with budgets and meeting behind doors, talking about this and talking about that, looking at some blatant, perhaps, misuse of time and, and whatever else, just blatantly, I followed all of it, you know what I mean? So, I always heard this thing that says you must practice what you preach. So, if we're preaching that employees that there, there are, must follow policies, we have to have that same guile and, and, uh, from the city council, from every single one of you, and, and the mayor, for that matter. So I hope that I'll get some further education, that I'm not correct in my thinking, and so I can be educated, because I did afford the opportunity to go to law school, but, but I, I thank the city for hiring one so he or she can educate the community so we can be better citizens, be more involved in things as we move here and move there. I'll talk more on TV tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That, uh, that brings us to item number nine, which is the consent agenda for tonight, and I look for a motion to approve the tax releases, the ordinance and resolutions to acknowledge, receive a petition and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute leases and authorize interim city manager and city clerk to execute all closing documents for acquisitions. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Councilman Nine, seconded by Councilman Joyner, is there need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Considerative passes. Item number ten is consideration of the recommendations of a planning board meeting, which was held July ninth, twenty twenty-four, um, and acknowledge, receive the planning board minutes. Uh, this is, uh, at this time, I would like to ask a member of staff, please come forward, we'll have, I will then open up the floor for members of the public who wish to speak on this particular issue, but ask a council if they will be willing to adopt the ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Miss Pinkson.
Thank you, good evening. The rezoning request before you today is a property on Northwestland Bullhorn. It is about halfway between Thomas A. Betts Parkway and Business Park Drive. The parcel has approximately six hundred and twenty-two feet of frontage on Northwestland and is currently zoned R-ten, which is a single-family residential zoning district, and the proposal is to rezone this piece to B-five with conditions. B-five is intended to support a variety of commercial uses. The subject property is currently surrounded by a variety of industrial and commercial uses and zoning districts. Um, to the north is a single-family residential dwelling. To the west is a landscaping service, an indoor sports range, and those properties are zoned B-five, also B-five C-D. Uh, to the east across Northwestland, uh, there's a variety of uses, um, including a single-family dwelling and a barber and beauty shop in the O-I zoning district. And I, I did misspeak, the property to the north is undeveloped, it does not have a single-family residence, it's undeveloped. Um, the Together Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan recommends, um, this area the infill and developed area, and, um, the surrounding, uh, properties are consistent with, uh, with what the, uh, with the comprehensive plan would recommend in terms of zoning or, uh, commercial corridor with, um, a high transportation volume. Uh, I mentioned that the proposal is to rezone to B-five C-D, and the applicant is including, um, a condition that would prohibit a series of land uses on the subject property in the screen, and the venue shows that complete list of land uses that would be prohibited on the property. Um, those uses include kettle operations, a beauty shop, barber service, blacksmith services, flea markets, um, some dwellings, recycling centers, and so on. If you have any questions, please do let me know, it is a long list of prohibited uses. The planning board recommended approval of the proposed rezoning based on compatibility of the proposed zoning with surrounding land uses and zoning, um, and also the appropriateness of the B-five zoning district along a major transportation corridor. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, thank you.
Any questions from Pinkson, from Nelson?
Um, Ms. Pinkson, any, any feedback from neighbors related to, uh, the rezoning request?
Yes, in fact, the neighbor to the west, the immediate west, um, proposed the, the conditions, and those were agreed upon by the applicant, and these are rezoning conditions that are also applied to the property to the west, so out of consistency, um, with that zoning condition, the neighbor to the west felt that these conditions would also be appropriate on this property, and the property owner, uh, was agreeable to that.
Steve Wells?
Thank you. Uh, with that said, uh, we will open up the podium to anyone who cares to speak on this particular matter. It's a request by bomber addict Knuckles to rezon property having an area plus or minus five point two acres at twenty-nine fifteen Northwestland Bullhorn, from R-ten, which is a median density residential district, to B-five C-D, which is conditional commercial services district. Those conditions have just been updated by Ms. Pinkson. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this rezoning matter?
Mr. Davis?
Good evening again. I am the property owner to the west of this property, and as was stated by staff, we've worked very well with the developer or the proposed owner of the property and worked out, the list is very similar to what we have in Northside Business Park, so we're very pleased we pulled the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this particular matter? Okay, see none, I'll, uh, look for a motion to adopt the ordinance as proposed.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Joyner, is there need for further discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That brings us to a public hearing relative to the following land development code amendments recommended for approval, found compliance with conference plan by the planning board, this request by Adrian Cuthlin, Cuthlin, of Olah Group LLC, rezoned property having an area of plus or minus point two, five, two, four acres, um, at eleven thirty-one South Church Street from R-six MFA, which is a medium density multifamily residential district, to B-five C-D, which is a conditional, 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 so, commercial services district. Uh, the following use shall be prohibited, that's the use of the kennel, pre-matorium, nightclub, bar, tavern, hours of operation of the non-residents should be limited from seven A to ten P. Uh, at this point, Ms. Pinkson, you care to speak to this particular matter?
Sure, I'll speak briefly. Um, as you described, this is a proposed rezoning from R-six MFA to B-five C-D with the conditions outlined on the screen. Um, the property is currently occupied by a warehouse and a commercial structure. It is surrounded, um, entirely by a single-family residential in the R-six MFA district, but again, it does have a commercial structure on the property and has been used as commercial, um, in the past. Uh, the B-five zoning district is intended for a variety of commercial uses, and the Together Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as infill growth. Um, while the property is surrounded entirely by single-family residential, um, it does have a commercial structure as I described, and preserving housing stock and affordable housing is an important, um, recommendation from the Together Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, and so the conditions have been placed on the rezoning in order to alleviate any concerns about, um, potential commercial uses that might be located at the property. So that's the intent of, uh, the conditions on the property. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, sir. Councilor Joyner?
Yes, have there been any community, uh, concerns, or have the community been able to notify them of the change?
There was a notice mailed to adjoining property owners, there was no one from the public, or no one from the public spoke, um, in favor or opposition of this request other than the applicant herself at the planning board meeting.
Anyone else? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to, uh, this particular matter? It's a request by Adrian Cuthlin of Olah Olah Group LLC, rezoned property having an area of point two, four acres at eleven thirty-one South Church Street from R-six MFA to B-five C-D. Is there any member of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, my name's Adrian Cuthlin, I'm the applicant to address your question. When I submitted the original application, um, this property lies pretty much right along the line between Little Raleigh Neighborhood and South Rocky Mount, and so I did personally call the neighborhood representatives and spoke with Ella Clark of Little Raleigh and Brenda Cooper of South Rocky Mount, and their feedback, their response was both positive. They wanted to see, uh, more businesses go into this, into this neighborhood. Um, so I see this request is not so much a reason, it is something new, but as to request an oversight in zoning that occurred, it seems like when the building was constructed in nineteen forty-four, it is a commercial building, is even described as a commercial building specifically of storage warehouse in the city's own records, but using the building as a storage warehouse is not allowed. So, renovation should have happened when it was built, but it didn't. Looking a little deeper, the building has been continually used for commercial purposes in a residential zone for the past eighty years. So, as far as concerned, we've been looking at like effects on roadway capacity, there will be, um, it already has a driveway and plenty of ramps to run around, everything will be the same, it would just make the uses of the past eighty years equal now. The uses were art, craft, glass, a glass factory, there was Pierce's Body Shop that did auto repair and bodywork and operated as a wrecker service, there was the Sawdust Barn, which is a wood shop and contractor storage warehouse, and Drake's Awning and Windows Service, and they made and repaired windows and awnings. Every business that's ever occupied this building has been a B-five use, and conforms to surrounding commercial uses up and down South Church Street that are already zoned to B-five. The only reason that I was allowed a certificate of occupancy was there was no change of use because I repair and rebuild windows, which may be the unicorn buyer of that property because nobody does that work on windows anymore, they just throw them out. So, my business may be the end of line for this building, with the commercial form and function of the building, it could never be used as a dwelling, a home, or a shelter. With R-six MFA zoning, the only new businesses that could come to this location to enrich and revitalize the neighborhood is a fortune teller or a health club. That's not a good outlook for the neighborhood. This parcel zoning dunes the building to inevitable demolition because nobody can legally use it, and it dunes a block to get another vacant lot sometime in the future. Now, when we take a step back, we see the trend of the...
Yeah, you don't have to, but he would.
Okay.
I, I think it's much more like...
Well, okay. All right.
I see everybody bobbing their heads, so I think we're good, but, uh, but if you have any questions, I'll go far. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this particular rezoning matter? Having done, I will receive a motion to adopt the ordinance as proposed.
So, second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, that was the second over here, from Councilman Harris. Any need for comment? Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Ordinance has been, uh, passed. Brings us to item number eleven, which is consideration resolution authorizing lease agreement with AC Dahar, doing businesses, Yaba Group, Inc., presiding on property at two oh seven East Thomas Street, five-year lease with an automatic renewal for one successive term of five years, annual rent of forty-two thousand. The renewed lease will increase rent five percent to forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars annually, with initial term beginning August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. The renewal term will be August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-four. Lease is advertised pursuant to General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-two. Requested actions, we postpone this until September twenty-three of twenty twenty-four, the next city council meeting. Is there a motion to do that?
No.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second? Second by Councilman Blackwell, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion has been moved this to, uh, the next meeting on September twenty-third. Out of total, the agenda is consideration of contract continuation with enhancements, innovations with Axon Futures. The total amount of correct, uh, of contract extension is five million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents over five years. Enhancements include additional licenses for sworn and non-sworn officers, phaser strongs, interview rooms, to increase the public safety suite with capabilities for carrying outlaw enforcement. Slighter was postponed to end the August twenty-sixth meeting. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute a path to city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker?
Say.
Seconded by Councilman, uh, her Joyner and officers. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Contract extension is, is made. Uh, item thirteen is consideration resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an amendment to installing finance contract dated as of February twenty twenty twenty-four by, between City of Rocky Mount and PNC Pay, Project Warner, and making certain findings required by the North Carolina General Statute one fifty-nine dash one fifty-one two, uh, also authorizing to execute first amendment to deed of trust, consideration of the first amendment to install a financing contract with PNC Pay. The final maturity date of the twenty twenty-four IFC will be modified from one twenty twenty-nine to two twenty thirty-four. The principal payments will be raised accordingly. All other terms remain unchanged. This time I will receive a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize appropriate staff to execute amended deed of trust, and to approve the amended amendment to install a financing contract, authorize the mayor and interim city manager, finance director and city clerk to execute, same.
No.
Seconded by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, can, sorry, Councilman Blackwell?
I'll, I'll defer to, uh, Peter, but I believe this is really the, uh, term though that we borrowed for fifty-nine months to extend it out, and it really, really becomes a balance sheet transaction more than anything, so.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item fourteen is consideration of loan subordination agreement with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency relative to City of Rocky Mount Partnership with Southeastern North Carolina Community Development Corporation of the Band Street Homes in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. I look for a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the loan supporting that agreement.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman TJ Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh, that brings item fifteen, consideration memorandum of understanding between the Rocktown Police Department and Nash County Public Schools. The MOU includes eight SRO officers, fully funded by Nash County Public Schools, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six school years. I look for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
No.
Oh, gosh, I think that was all my chance. Uh, motion made by Councilman TJ Walker, if it was seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is anybody else I missed? Councilman Javaris Walker. All right, any need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh, with that said, that brings us to a closed session for personnel matter. This time I'd like a motion to go into closed session. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by, by Councilman Knight, is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, um, all in favor, please say aye. We're now in closed session. We will stay here, um, for this, for closed session, uh, that would have come out, we do have a continuation of the media hall meeting, but just we're right here, and, um, and then we will, uh, loop it off and chart.